All right, we're gonna call to order tonight's August seventh, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission meeting. And we will begin with roll call. Commissioner Lind here, Commissioner Zackman.
Here.
And Commissioner Brummond is here. At this time, I'd invite you all to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we have a really light agenda tonight, but we will still offer the opportunity for any commissioners or staff to make amendments to the agenda.
Madam Chair, staff has no changes to the agenda?
Okay, and then if there are no changes from the commissioners, then I will make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Oh, second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. And then we'll move into our open forum, which is the opportunity for the public to address the commission on any items not on tonight's agenda. And at this point in time, we'll just note for all those who are joining us on Zoom or watching the recording later that there is no one from the public joining us tonight. And since we only take public comments, we will move on from the open forum. To, and I don't think we need a motion to close up a forum, that's right. Okay, and then we're just gonna move on to approving the minutes from the July eighth, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission meeting. Is there anyone who needed to make a note of any changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the July twenty twenty-five meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. And at this point in time, then that moves us into our other business, because we actually don't have any planning items tonight. So we are just going to get a staff presentation on Granicus. Are you going to introduce that?
I will introduce that, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Not presenting it, but yeah, this presentation will be presented to you today by the city clerk, Deb Johnson, and IT manager Dean Bush. So if you guys want to gather at the table, we'll have a more interactive training session with iPads.
Bring your iPads and come to the table.
They're so fancy. With lights, he's flagging us down, so Councilman Varancamp is here too.
If I may, I would love to sit through it, but I'm gonna sit through it myself.
Yeah.
I was hoping if you had questions for me. I haven't been here for two meetings. One meeting I had a grandson, my first one. Second meeting was a, second meeting was a family vacation.
Congratulations.
I'm here tonight to answer anything you got. If that's, if that's proper.
Yeah, let's move the, you know, item six C. If you guys are willing, just allow that to go to the forefront. And then Commissioner Varancamp would be free to go, and then we'll move on with the training. So is there anyone who has any questions for Councilman Varancamp?
Do you have any news from the council, anything interesting?
It's been a quiet, they shouldn't say it, a quiet summer. A public service announcement. Nineteen night was unbelievable, again. I think there was over fifteen hundred people out at, out at Public Works. We had fourteen neighborhood parties. Council, mayor, bunch of us split up and made it to every one of them. No, in the ones I went to, I went to four, no negative comments. Great to see what's going on. Where's the best place to get information? And I told them, stop listening or looking at the Corcoran Gazette on Facebook and call staff. Call the city with your questions, please, or any one of the council members. Everything has been fantastic out at the Lions Park. We've got Country Days coming next, this weekend, next weekend, excuse me. Summer Fest, for anybody that doesn't know, out at the Burr Field School, among me, on ten, that's Sunday, noon to four thirty. Great little place to stop, buy a raffle ticket. And if you win, you don't have to be present to win, but they've got some pretty good stuff out there. And it's a step back in time, that, that little house is a time capsule. We've done a lot for them to help them out with their floor, their chimney, their bell tower, and now their roof. If you haven't been by, it's pretty much sealed up nice and tight. The Country Days, again, the following weekend, St. Thomas Festival, a week from Sunday, that's always good. They're trying to raise money, more money, to finish everything they need, hopefully for the church. As that gets rebuilt, they need that, and they tell me they need that badly. And I've been in the Catholic church, and it's not handicap accessible. The bathrooms are difficult to get to, and the walls are not falling in there, falling out. If you've ever walked in there, there's cables holding the walls together, so something needs to happen there. Lot of conversation from people about the city making promises related to our downtown. So if there's one thing you could do there, the vision of our downtown was St. Therese, and then other shops and things like that. But everybody's gotta agree to that. And if the landowner that owns it now is not coming with information and not doing stuff, there's very little we can do about it. So a number of folks have made those comments, and it's like, well, the city promised. No, we have a plan, but everybody has to agree, let them know that.
But the zoning kind of dictates what can be built there, correct?
But the landowner can choose not to engage in that.
It's mixed use, it's very, it's a very open deal. I've gotten the landowner to the table with us to talk about what he and they are thinking. And it, it's pretty close to what we, the city did back six, seven years ago. Other than a really grid system, his is more meandering along the definitions of the cricks and stuff like that, which I like that detail a little bit more, but everybody's gotta talk the same, the same talk and get going down the same deal. And I'll, I'll try to keep that dialogue open and such. Everything up on whole church development, if that's the way we say it, I forget how we say it. That is moving, they are being very particular on who they're dealing with and what they're gonna put in and such.
They have a sign up, sorry, they had a sign up calling for developers that were interested in that.
Five signs up, and we cut that down to one.
So did they, did they have developers step forward then?
No, we cut it down to one because they didn't have a permit to have that many signs and stuff.
I didn't see any signs anymore.
It's been, it's been one since, and they are talking to a number of people. Lot of activity all the way along County Road Thirty, from that intersection all the way over to Mama G's. And then both sides, it's just a lot of conversation, but nothing happening.
May I ask a question?
Please do.
Okay, so we got the first set of goals from the Met Council regarding the twenty twenty-six, or the next comprehensive plan that we'll go through. And it's interesting, because what was highlighted was minimize disruption to food systems and maintain agriculture. But two huge plots of land on ten and on thirty just went up for sale, and the one on thirty sold right away. And so my question is, as a city, I know obviously we can't, but how do we work with the county related to preserving egg? Because the county has egg programs, but a lot of times, like, it's difficult for residents or landowners to find that information, and it's becoming increasingly expensive.
From me, the county's doing everything they can not to let anybody develop, it seems like, because they all need turn lanes and all this, and that has blown the whole number of developments out of the water. The two that you're talking about are in those areas that, the county, not much. Our, our, our ordinances related to minimum ten acres, those kind of things, average ten acres per parcel, those kind of things is, is about what we have. Dwight, you can correct me if I'm wrong. We already have the one next to the one on County Road Ten, which already goes to thirty, is under all kinds of duress because of the power line easement and other things that's been going on for a little over two years now. So it, I have no suggestion or anything other than you already, you know you're down the street from the Bechtold Farms. That is a pretty okay development, ranging anywhere between six acres and upwards, and those are some expensive homes and stuff.
Sure, I don't mean more homes, I mean, what are we doing to maintain, like, and benefit our egg producers?
Well, again, that, that's, that's a whole different conversation, because the Met Council also wants to change things. And then legislatively, they wanted to open up low density being five acre, five units per acre plus, if I remember all of that stuff with the legislative things that wanted to change. But that's not the county, the county, we don't get much direction from.
That was gonna be my question.
We don't, we don't get much direction, they don't, and...
Or input, is, that was my question, is if you want to provide feedback.
We don't give, they don't listen to us. We, I've been hounding about intersections and traffic and all of those things, and they've made the comment, Madam Chair, that, you know, it'd be nice if they could be included in what we are trying to do. And they're included in every development we have, our staff does a really good job. They are, they don't seem to be worried about traffic. They're finally starting to look at County Road Thirty with the six-ten change that's happened. All of that is dumping into our, dumping into Corcoran at County Road Thirty and one oh one. They don't seem to be listening to us much. It's frustrating on our part, send your comments and questions to Kevin Anderson.
Oh, and I'm reaching out beyond to representatives. I just wonder how all these people plan on creating a strong food system, if we can't also find a way to maintain egg. So I just keep asking.
Farmers can't afford tax, more taxes and stuff, that's terrible.
Yes.
So, no, you and I, I, I appreciate the side of town being left that way and stuff, but that's a whole different conversation, so.
Okay.
Everybody, Lindsay, you're up there in an area that's kind of right on the border and stuff. Jay, if I remember right, you are down, are you in M and I Homes over here?
Uh, no, I'm actually very close to Shoe Farm.
You're out by the Shuddy, okay, cool. Oh, you're up on, oh, that's right, you're up by Shade by Jake and stuff.
Yeah, yes.
That's where I get my pig from. No, I had, I remembered that all of a sudden, so Cecilia, I know where you are, out on the west side of town and stuff, but we gotta do everything we can to grow the Eastern Third, the Met Council, or the Metro Service, Urban Service Area responsibly nice. And your visions, thoughts, and ideas are heard when you talk.
Do we envision that the Musa will move?
I think that will be a part of the next conversation that begins in the fall of twenty twenty-six. Okay.
Yeah, I, I was part of that over Maple Grove, it moved out to Lawndale. And then three months later, it encompassed all of Maple Grove, is how that went. It was supposed to be one move, and then ten years later, the next change. But when I was in Maple Grove, and that's probably twenty, it was probably twenty-five years ago, that I went through that when I was out there, and things changed rapidly because I was in the country in Maple Grove. So it, it's, it's one of those things. And there's just not that much more capacity. If it were to grow, there would have to be another sewer line and another main, water main, that would have to change. Or the, the, we would be responsible for adding water towers and maybe even another water treatment, just if it grows that much. So it's a little nuts, so.
Does anyone else have any additional questions?
Any questions? Jay, again, welcome, I haven't seen you, but they picked, we had good choices this year and stuff, and kind of picking neighborhoods and stuff. You're from a neighborhood that it could get a little crazy for you guys, so it's good to have everybody.
One question, so the comp plan update, you said fall of twenty twenty-six, is we're gonna start that?
Starts.
We'll be starting it next year, I don't know if it's fall specifically, I know that we're gonna start kicking it off. Not a specific timelines yet, but sometime probably mid to late twenty twenty-six.
In our recommendations, we would love to get it in before, obviously, twenty thirty. But it's the twenty fifty kind of plan.
Twenty fifty update, I think we'll have to have it submitted to the Met Council by twenty twenty-eights for their review, so I think we're gonna start next year.
Number of public hearings and other things.
Yeah, just a two-year engagement process.
Yeah.
Lot of information, so look on the website for all of the things. Or our newsletter, or, there's so much communication going up. That was a frustrating thing out of Public Works for nineteen night, everybody says, how do we know what's going on in the city? Where do you live? This address, you get, is it sixteen pages or eighteen page update, quarterly update in the mail? I just throw it away, well, that's what's going on in the city.
The one feedback from residents is that they, if the neighborhood parties continue to grow, they would appreciate it if it didn't conflict with the night-to-night that the city puts on. That's take it or leave it, it was the only feedback.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that, and, and again, there's, with all of the neighborhood parties, they get packet, they get gift, I would say gift bags, they get a whole bunch of stuff to give to their neighborhoods and stuff. And the ones that I was at, I said, you know, and when you're done, or come on over, we got pork chops, we got sweet corn, we got all kinds of drawings out of Public Works. Well, we didn't know that, and it's like, if you registered for the party, it was in the same information as, so. It, it's something I don't think I would want to go away out of Public Works with all of the donations and everything that comes in. I think nearly everything is donated by businesses and such. And the neighborhood parties is a great deal, but nineteen night is just that, it's, it's one or the other for right now, so. Good input, thank you.
Okay, and if there's nothing else, then we will thank, count.
I do have, I have one question, I'm also learning the processes a little bit. Any updates related to the QuickTrip development?
QuickTrip was approved.
Okay.
They walked away, because they, they did not appreciate, the one conditional use was limited hours to closing at ten PM. They wanted to be at twenty-four seven, so that was their decision. When we were talking, I think you all recommended?
We recommended it with the approval of twenty-four hours.
Yep, and it was going that way, and then one of our council members put in, because they actually said they do have some QuickTrips that were limited hours to ten, that was put in. I said yes to it because I kind of wanted a QuickTrip there. But they walked away because they did not want to limit it to a twenty, uh, uh, six AM to ten PM deal. So that's off the table, as far as I know, so. And then there's a lot going on on the corner of Mama G's, that property, I see activity around the property out in front of Bellwether. That's, that's mixed use or commercial, I forget.
It's mixed use.
And then that whole area south of Bellwether to thirty, that I believe something's coming soon to us. And I know, I know there's a development coming, they're going through the process right now.
Thank you.
Okay, great question, and if you've got a question, my phone number is my cellphone. Leave a message, I will call back.
All right, thank you so much, Councilman, for your time.
Thank you for moving it, thank you, have fun.
All right, thank you, Deb.
Congrats on the grandbaby.
It's a good deal.
And at this point in time, I think Deb, you want us to vacate our seats up here and join you at the table.
Yeah, and I'm gonna, yeah, we'll have you come up with your iPads and sit around the table, and I'm gonna have Dean start with you, because he's gonna get you guys logged into your iPads with everything. We have your passwords, we have your user names. So we'll get you started with that, and then we'll go right into Granicus.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, cool jacket, by the way. Missed it last time. Very cool, very cool, I have to gather my things.
This is for Jim. So the first page is his, those are your Apple passwords, and I'll let Dean go through that. He's also gonna go through the city-owned device policy with you guys, so.
Yeah, we'll start with that, it's a, it's a very basic, simple policy we put together. Pretty self-explanatory, it's property, these are property in the city. Limited personal use, people use, you know, their stuff for personal, we don't get too uptight about that. Can use it as you like, there's no service on them, they're just bi-fi only. You know, take care of the device, if, if they're ever lost, damaged, or stolen, whatever, just let us know immediately, because they're all remotely managed, so we kill them, and do whatever we need to do. And then at the end of your appointment, or whatever, just read your device. And then it just says that, you know, we, we can monitor the device or usage if we want. And then there's a part about the company email, again, so that it is a city of corporate email account. So just be aware of that, you know, if you're emailing somebody, anything is all discoverable. So if there's a lawsuit or whatever, any email tends to be discoverable. So that's, you know, everybody has their, you'll see it on here, that's your email address. So then, yeah, we're only just technical writing this, so they're, they're pretty, they're pretty well set up for you. The only thing you're gonna have to really know is that pin, and they, they're probably all the same. Yeah, they're repeated.
Sorry, how does it open?
So that looks like that, and then...
Oh my god, amazing.
Yeah, and if you guys want different cases or anything, just let us know, these are, these are pretty nice, because you have a keyboard.
Love it.
Yeah, we, we use these actually quite a few places. So yeah, everybody, your, the pin is on your sheet, and yet I think they're all the same, so we'll break into your... We'll break into your...
There it is.
You'll see on these sheets, you've got, so you see your name, your email. That is your email password, we set those, we're not really supposed to, but we set them to not expire, depending on the case. So those ones, you can change your password at any time, there's a link on there. If you just wanna go in and change it, you're more than welcome, just follow that link at the bottom here, and you can change your password at any time, you know, just the usual rules, capital letter, and a number, or a character, things like that. If you do, so you're gonna see there's not much on these. Deb, of course, is gonna go through the High Legislature, and you have Outlook, so if you click on Outlook, you might already have a couple of emails in there, doesn't look like you have any, but, because they're pretty new, but...
Question, so like Dwight, when you, and when you send things, are you gonna be sending it to this email address now? Or are you gonna send it to our personal, which is what we always use?
We'll be sending it to the Peak email address, the, the one on Granicus, so.
So this one will be tied to the city one?
So it'll be the city one.
Okay, so we need, we're gonna need to be checking this.
Yes.
Because right now, we get into our personal, so it's just...
Right, um, when, when new packets come out or whatever, it's gonna be tied to that email.
Okay, okay, that's a big transition, okay.
Yeah, so you see that on there, if, so if you, if you wanna check your email anywhere else, I'm sure you're well aware, everything you do these days, there's multi-factor and things like that. So if, say you're at home, and you wanna check your email, it's, or, or, or you're not on, you're not on your device. So say you're at a, on your laptop at a coffee shop or something like, or something like that. You go to outlook, what is it, outlook.office.com, I think. And then, you know, of course, put in your use, your username is the same, the Apple IDs won't, the same, they're, they're tied together. So you can, you can kind of disregard that Apple ID. But there's your username, of course, is your email address and your password. It will ask you to authenticate, and everybody should have an authenticator icon on their desktop on the iPad. So what that means is, like I said, say you grab your personal laptop, you go, it'll, you log in, it'll come up with a two-digit number. I don't know if anybody has used the Microsoft Authenticator. It'll have the two-digit number, and then you'll just start that up, and then the two-digit number will pass you through.
But we'll have to have this.
You'll have to have this, we can change it, if you wanna put it on like your personal cellphone or anything like that, you can put the authenticator anywhere if you want. We just put them all in here, just so at least you have a start.
What if we have authenticated your work already? Do you have multiple pass keys?
Yeah, you can have multiple, I've got, like on mine, I've got... I've even got a couple here. Yeah, so you'll see I've got actually
Yeah, you do.
Four different city of corporate ones, because of different things we have to log into. We have one called IT Support, we have one for Finance. So you can have multiple. Yours is already set up, if you go, you know, again, if you're on a different computer or something, when you do it, just walk through the steps when it brings up the QR code.
Yeah.
You just go in there and scan it, it's simple, but always just call us if you have any troubles, if you have whatever. But yes, you can have multiple, in case I've got four of them for Corcoran.
Are people gonna add this email address to your Outlook on your...
And then you don't have to have your device, you can just have your...
Correct. Yep, yep, and we realize that, but we didn't know what everybody wants and things like that.
So if you have a mail, I mean, with a variety of things, we're on Outlook, but it's not...
I think you, you might have clicked on that, and instead, if you do, it's logged in.
Yeah, so, yeah, go back to your, move that, there you go. Yeah, there you go. Yeah, you wanna make sure you use the, it's weird, there's some, there's some places that don't, I don't know why, they don't like to use the Outlook app, but we actually prefer everybody use, that's what it's built for, you know, so we prefer that everybody use the Outlook app, so it's just easier that way than stuff like... Uh, I think that's about all I had, like I said, if you wanna reset the password, that's on there. You know, we put all this info in here, but again, you don't really need your Apple ID, they're already logged in, they're set up. You can go to, if you want, you can go to, on the desktop, there's a company portal, and what we do is we'll push apps out there, and you can go, if you see something, there's, I think there's a couple of Granicus shortcuts, I don't know if you need them or want them or not, but it's called Company Portal, you just click on an app, and it'll start, or you can send your Gmail on. Or, or if you want something that isn't in there, we can add it.
Do we have, um, do we have a two sixty-five subscription, like meaning Word?
You only have, so the, I think Council too, but the commission members only have what's called mobility, so it'll allow you to do this, and a, and a G one license, which is just email.
Okay.
We didn't do the full G three, which would be Word and all that, it's pretty much so you can log in.
Yep.
We can manage the device and get your email.
Cool. Where's this portraing you were talking about?
It's a, it's an icon.
Yeah, it's an icon on the desktop.
It's Company Portal, it looks like a little human.
Yeah.
What's the wifi here?
Uh, the public one.
Yeah.
It's capital W, Welcome, number two, and capital Z, Corcoran.
Oh, two, number two?
Number two, sorry, yeah.
Should we be logging into the public, what's the city of Corcoran staff?
The public one.
That worked.
Okay, I thought you were allowed into the public one.
They were when I first opened it.
My...
Oh, weird, okay. Yeah, I would, I would use the public one, it's... You, you would use the staff one, but we actually limit some things on the staff one, the public one's...
And then Corcoran with a capital C.
Are you using Windows three sixty-five?
And that should be...
To manage. Yes, yes, we use iTunes.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, so what we do is, it's pretty slick, you, you turn this on, and I don't know if you've ever seen it, but you have either a phone or another iPad, and you use what's called Apple Configurator. but you have either a phone or another iPad, and you use what's called Apple Configurator. And so I start it up on wherever, you start that up, and you go through a couple steps, you literally put it close to it, and both, hey, this is another device, you do that, it adds it to Apple Business Manager, and then we take control of it from there and put it into Intu. And that allows us to put those apps, and find that app and go on it, it's, it's pretty slick, um...
I sell all day, so that's why.
What's that?
I sell Microsoft, so that's why.
Oh, is that right? Um, yeah, I've only been here six months, so a lot of this was set up, and they did a good job of setting...
Yeah, they did, got it in the Company Portal, just fine.
Cool, okay.
All right.
Yeah, that's about all I had, um, but again, I, um, have, or, um, I think Dwight, your recorder was, but our card's out, so...
Would you guys prefer we change our password, or do you...
Nobody else knows them.
Oh, they're all different?
They're all, yeah, passwords are different.
Okay, I was gonna say, if we're all the same, I don't know if that's good.
Yeah, it's whatever your preference, if there's something that works better for you, then, yeah, go for it.
Yeah, only the pins, the, the same for everybody, but, yeah, they're all different, so totally, again, totally up to you. Just give us a holler if you need anything.
Okay, thanks for having me, thank you very much.
All right, good.
I'll make sure they sign their little, that they, uh, will behave with their iPads.
Yeah, we do sign them, now, I'm gonna tell them.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I'll get almost gathered up at the end of training, so you don't worry about that. Okay, so you guys are all like on your own page, and you can see your icons?
Yeah.
Do you see something that says iLegislate?
Yes.
Go ahead and click on that. Now you're, you're gonna see your page a little different from mine, because you're on an iPad and I'm on a computer. So it's a little different. Yeah, yeah, so now each of you were given a smaller slip on the back, here's a smaller one. Those are your, gonna be your credentials to get into iLegislate. The domain is always gonna be corporatemn.granicus.com. Hopefully that'll stay filled in for you. Your username's gonna be your first name, dot your last name, and then put your password in. And then you can go ahead and put, uh, sign in.
Ooh, so what happens if, not that it's a big deal, but y'all spelled my name wrong?
Is it?
Mm-hmm, it's two Rs instead of two Ms.
Well, we couldn't respect you, well...
Is that a big, I like...
Has everyone spelled wrong this entire time?
Can I, no, because my nameplate is right, but...
Is, is his, is his...
They use their names.
Or it's just wrong in the Grantus?
Uh, let me try.
The first page, is your email right?
Yeah, oh, just letting you, let me just see if it was just a typo, I'll try.
Okay, that might have just been a typo, let's...
Well, I'll try.
Give it a shot, yeah, I, I'm not even sure, otherwise I can go on the backend and do some fixing.
This is cool, I didn't know it was possible in this thing. I legislate. Oops, oh, I kicked it.
It is telling me that the password is not correct, I'll try again, but with my name spelled properly, it is not.
Just got to mess that up again. I saved that sorry for a long time. That might have been literally beaches of pouring during the appointment and spelling it incorrect.
So if you use it with the other name, will it allow you to get in? And then what I'll do is go back and fix it and send you an email with a new setup after tonight's training, that was all.
That one, that's perfect.
We can fix that.
Yes, it, it was with the incorrect, it is...
I can't believe I did that.
That's okay, it's, a lot of names and things and...
Oh my gosh, yeah, we've had to set up a lot of people on different things.
Yeah.
So when you get in there, um, now, I'm not sure what you're viewing, you could probably see everything that's ever been in there, right?
There's a lot listed under agendas.
Okay, so you see them.
Planning Commission is the first that messed up here.
Yeah, okay, so you're able to see all of them, the Planning Commission one on the top that you see?
Yeah.
So you're seeing all the past ones too, I'm saying, okay.
Only the past ones.
Yeah, so the Planning Commission that says August seventh, you can actually click on that, there's a view on the side. And I know, like I said, mine looks different than yours, so we'll try to work it through a little bit, because I know when I did the training with the council, they're like, yours looks different than mine.
Yeah, it does quite a bit.
Just a little bit, yeah, so, um, when you see the agenda there, and like it pulls up the whole agenda, what we did was used a, an older Planning Commission meeting, so we just pulled it into iLegislate, so you could see what an agenda would look like. Um, here you can see the whole part of the agenda, you can scroll through it. Um, you can also open up and view each item, so like five A, you can open it up, you can see what they're calling for action. Um, any attachments are on there, you can click on that, you can see the attachments. So if there's a cover page, you can see the whole cover page, um, pull that up a little bit.
So I'm assuming public comment is for...
That would be part of like when you had an agenda, like that's open for when they have open comments for...
That would be added in, so it would have been past public comment that would be added into view.
Okay, yeah.
And then the, it would show you, so I'm assuming this is for council, 'cause it shows what the vote was.
Are you looking at past ones?
Which part are you looking at?
So like I went into the actual, uh, like agenda items, so I went into six A, right? So then I can see LA text, but below it says public comment, and so I was clicking on that, and it showed you.
Right, 'cause you can see that, yeah.
And so this is related to how that person felt.
And they can, yeah, and they can actually make their notes on the side, and that's what you can see that I can't see, so...
Okay.
It's interesting up here, like I can hit where it says no public comments, um, if there's, if there's not a public comment to the item, but if there is a, an item in there where there's a public comment, it would say that they can do public comment. You can get in there, make the notes, um, during the meeting, and whoever, you could like put in the name, make a comment about what it is.
And then whether they were in support of it or they opposed it, okay.
So you can have that for your own notes, only you see that?
Sure, okay.
Um, that doesn't go to anyone else, it's for your notes only, so if you wanna go back later, like maybe when the minutes come out later, and you could review it and go, oh yeah, that's right, um, that's what that was all about. Um, yeah.
Okay, so public comments is, we're not gonna see anything in there unless we put something ourselves in.
Right, if you add to that, 'cause this is gonna be all your, um, notes, and you can do things, like you can note things, um, you can pick an item out and put your notes in down here, there's like a whole section, you can make notes for yourself. So even before a meeting, when you're reviewing a packet, if you wanna do a follow-up or make sure you ask a question at a meeting, you put that stuff down so that you can save that in there, and then you'll have that, so like, oh yeah, that's right, I wanted to ask about this. Um, so that comes in really handy. Um, also, when you're in there, you can do things like booking, bookmarking things. So, um, your areas where there's a bookmark, I have mine here, so I can hit that. But when you go back out to where like you're looking at an agenda, and you're looking at the whole agenda, you can see now here, I bookmarked something, oh yeah, there's something there that I made a note, I wanna go back and follow up on that. So I tell a lot of people, go ahead, put your notes in there, add a bookmark, you know, these are things that you're using just for your own personal, um, they'll come in really handy for that. Um, it's really simple if you start just messing around, you know, going around and using different things in there. And each of you might find a different way that you're gonna like to use it for yourself.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but yeah, it, it's so, it's weird when you first look at it, because it looks like, oh, there's really not much there. And you kinda have to open each item and really take a look at what it is, open the attachments. Um, especially with planning stuff, because the reports can be so big, you're going in there and pulling up, you know. So they still look very much like what they used to, you know, here I've got this pulled up, so then you're gonna get the report, and you can go through that, but then you can still go off to the side and make, you know, whatever notes down here that you had for that item, and you can keep them together.
This is a part of our paper that we used to get.
Yeah, you're gonna be able to see everything, all the plans, all those items will come up here. Um, you'll be able to look at everything, you'll be able to blow them up on your screen and pinpoint those areas too. I know some people like to see big copies, so it takes them, it takes a little bit of getting used to, I think, you know, for some, but...
Can you make notes on the PC?
Yeah, so I was just doing that, yeah, 'cause it looks like you have to pop out of the attachment to go back to your notes section?
Yeah, but I bet you can make notes on it.
No, I've done it, I've done, I've done some annotations of different things on it, so you can go in...
You can go drop in there.
Oh yeah, we have little, little tools right here.
Yeah, you've got your little tools in these areas, and yours again might look different.
It says, enter the author name you wanna use for newly inserted annotations, but I'm assuming that's not... But that's only for me, I would assume that's...
So that's where we got when we wanna, yeah.
When we wanna annotate, so we can see all the...
Yeah, but you get those there, yeah.
But then it says, so we're just saying done, and then we can annotate.
Dude, yours looks a little...
But I don't wanna see anyone else's, I just wanna see mine.
Yeah, you're, the only thing you're gonna see here though is like notes that you've made yourself.
Okay.
Nobody else is gonna, you aren't doing anything to the packet that somebody else is gonna see.
Got it.
Um, also, another item, you know, like some people, if you, like, I can see down here, like mine is a little different, like I can create a note, and I can go right up here.
There must be a big difference between the desk, desktop and the iPad.
So if you can find a, create a note, or you're drawing...
So like, I'm, I have my drawing tools, I can circle things.
You can strike out things, but it's only doing it to your copy.
I'm not sure it happened, I don't...
So it's, it's a little, it takes a little bit of playing around. Um, and then if you don't, if there's an area you don't like what you did, you can hit your clear annotations, and that'll take it off.
Yeah.
Or save your annotations when you're all done and you wanna keep them there. Um, but they're different in different places, so...
So I must have closed my little palette over here.
Um, do your back button right there for your item details?
Would you like to hold this back while we do that?
Oh, okay.
Is that a really annoying question, my voice?
No, not at all.
Oh, that's your bookmark.
Okay, so now this is just doing annotated ones, so I appreciate this, it's just, I can see them all at a time, and then you can see where you made the note, if you can, yeah, so if you only wanna see the one you annotated, that one holds up, that one you bookmarked, but I still can't figure out how to make a note.
Yeah.
That was different on the other end.
Specifically on it?
Yeah, 'cause you have the swipe...
Hold more up?
It's just an annotation.
Which is gonna be...
Oops.
Yeah, well, wait, put it right here.
Well, so that's what I thought.
Oh, boom, that's gonna be perfect.
Hers was a click and drag, but that makes sense.
Okay.
Oops.
And then I want to see if that holds up. That, and then, you're not putting in the tag.
Yeah.
And then I go back to my big view, and then it'll pull up, yeah. Okay. So then it'll show. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Actually, and then if you go notes, I wonder if it's...
I think those are the ones that are stamped, those are the ones that I just made up.
Yeah, I don't know, my palette's gone forever. Oh, that gives you that, okay.
That's something nice from a virgining standpoint, you guys kind of...
Did you start annotating at all?
No, I did, but then I got rid of those.
So my question is, Dwight, will you just copy a piece of meeting?
Sticking shots to the meeting credits is... Do we use AI in here? I do try to use my Copilot to like synthesize our agendas.
You wanna open the item back up and see if it comes back?
And it's not always perfect, because I have to download the PDF under my PowerPoint, and then reference it, and it's... But it does a pretty good job, the web chat does a pretty good job of scouring Corporate's website and policies and our zones.
Oh, you use it for...
I use it to prepare my comments for these meetings.
Okay.
Like tell me about zone RR and why it was created in Corporate, yeah, or RSF3, and why it differs from RSF2, and sure. Did you see it was really helpful?
No, that's so weird, it's like, I don't have something in like our setup.
It'll not hurt you until we get that.
I was like, I thought I put that before, but nothing happened, okay. Oh, is that a second part? I was like, I thought I put that before, but nothing happened, okay. Sure. Oh, sure. Yeah, that's nice, yeah, 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 and you know what, it's gonna take a little bit of playing around with. So you certainly have this on there for your, you can't do anything to hurt it. So you can do a lot of things in there, and you aren't gonna hurt that.
Can you enter iLegislate on your PC, like on, let's just say I have a personal PC, can I get into iLegislate? Do they have a web URL?
Um...
Or is it only an app?
It is on your app, but I think it wouldn't be any different than what I do, that's...
Otherwise, I'll just go to a browser and type it in, and see what happens.
I think, let's see, that's my iLegislate.
'Cause I'm just thinking, if the functionality is different, like obviously on the PC.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Oh, but you're using an app.
Yeah, mine is on app on my PC, but it still looks different.
Yeah.
Basically, it's not a mobile device, I would assume, this is a mobile, right, so it's a different format?
It's just so weird, yeah. So when I was first studying up training with the council back a few months ago, um, that's when we're like finding out, but...
Oh, gosh.
It looks different, so, and I had done a whole like tutorial how to do it, like, I recorded it and sent it out to the council, and they're like, hey, ours doesn't look like that, and I'm like, really? So we tried, I mean, it happens, but...
Why would you, okay, there is a download function, I'm just wondering why, why that, why that exists.
If you wanted to download it, say you wanna download it, and have a copy for, say, your personal folder or your files, you can download it, like here, I have it on my computer, so ob- obviously it wants me to send it right to my computers.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And then, you know, you can see it, like what a whole packet would look like.
Yep, okay.
So, um, what I could do is do this, let me save it to my laptop and show you what I get. Basically, you can get...
What it used to look like on your PC.
What it used to look like, yeah.
Okay. The little email thing won't do anything, because we don't use the, the utilities Outlook, it's taking too long.
Does this platform provide any collaboration opportunities between commission and council?
I think that there's supposed to be public meetings, and that's probably why it wouldn't.
Okay.
I think, yeah, I don't think, but I don't believe that is, yeah, the...
Yeah, that's true, good point, all right, I didn't think about it.
I mean, it's basically to make it a little easier for you individually, um, you know, to prepare for your meetings, be here for your meetings, make your notes.
Yeah.
Um, just kinda have everything at your fingertips.
Yeah, it's a little different, it'll work nice.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so...
What's, what's council's reaction been so far?
You know, I have, like, since everybody's been in and got up and running, nobody's had any issues with logging in or using anything. I always like say, give me a call if you run into anything, nobody has like once come and said, Deb, I'm really having problems with iLegislate or my packets, so it's worked really well, um, so I'm happy with that. I think, you know, those first, you know, that first week when everybody was just trying to get in, um, obviously all the door name changed and reset, and then I'll tell you to get back in and use it the right way.
Okay.
Um, but we'll, we can, we can fix that, so...
They might have, you might have already covered it, I didn't hear, can they use their personal computers to look at this when they're at home?
Um...
I couldn't find it on what, she was looking for a URL to see if she'd be good.
I'm, I'm not sure if that's gonna let them do that.
Unless you download the app on your personal device.
Yeah.
We'll look into that.
Yeah, that might be a question for me to ask too, 'cause I'm not sure if there's an internet.
I'd just lay it on to your computer.
Like you didn't have to find it, you had to find the app for the phone.
Right.
Yeah, so...
Maybe.
Just 'cause, you know, then they can have, you know, sometimes it's easier.
Like if you're looking at it at home and you're prepping for a meeting, and you don't wanna do it on your iPad, I, I agree. I mean, your iLegislate account is your iLegislate account, so if we can figure that out...
Wearing anything in the app.
Yeah, yeah.
And then as far as delivery of packets, it will just automatically be in there by four o'clock on the Friday, or Thursday before Friday.
I think the goal is to have it in there by noon on Friday, but four might be a good.
Okay.
Keep yourselves above.
Yeah.
And we'll look into maybe sending that notification to your personal email as well, just saying, hey, this is up.
Yeah.
Check out, you know, so we're not just.
Yeah.
But to be, we'll let you, we got to talk to Natalie, but we'll.
Right. I mean, what I'm doing now with council is, once we have the packet published, it's usually, like, we do it at the same time, it publishes to iLegislate and it publishes to the website at the same time. And then we put an email out to council, we say, hey, Mayor and Council, the council packet is, um, been published to iLegislate and online and is available for your viewing. And then they're aware that it's there, you know, and that's, otherwise, I mean, if one would assume that they would know that it's there, but then at least then they know, hey, it's ready, I can go and look.
And it came just like, you could just take this and sync it with your other mailbox so that you didn't have to check it back or what if you wanted.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah.
You can set up an auto-forward too.
Then you would just go and sync it.
Yeah.
You know, I will reply where you include all the members on the planning committees that come to quorum and backdoor deal.
Oh yeah, I know, I missed the training, how did that go?
Uh, that was just a fun. Something that makes a lot of sense because.
Don't worry about it. Oh, he was just commenting on hitting reply all if there's a.
And he's got a public one to the public. Yeah, and I do want to make, I mean, this is for your use and it's your notes, but, um, I do want you to know that, you know, with Data Practices Act, if someone ever comes, because these are city-owned, um.
Devices.
Devices, that if someone ever came and said, I want to know everything everybody's got, including the planning commissions, blah, 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 we would have to ask for your notes. So, I mean, don't put in there so-and-so stupid or whatever, you know, like just be mindful, they're your notes and they're your thoughts and that's fine. Um, but they are still public data, so.
Because they're recorded, if they were written on a piece of paper, they would not be public data.
And they still could be, because, you know, that's where it gets a little bit.
Assuming you kept them.
Assuming you kept them, but that's a little bit, yes.
We're going to all the weeds.
Data, data, data front, just, yeah, yeah. We don't have the city attorney here, but yes, yeah. So just want to point out.
Well, it creates a record in a way that writing it on a piece of paper wouldn't.
Right, right, they are, yeah, it's.
It's a digital footprint that can be.
Yes, yeah.
Covered and therefore.
Yeah, yeah.
It's different than had notes scribbled on a piece of paper.
What about a digital notebook?
I'm not kidding, I use one.
I could ask for it, I suppose.
Well, if you do tie in with, with, I think, city business, there is something to be said there, but definitely be aware that since these are your city, you know, I mean, that's part of what's in the, the policy here too that.
Yeah.
No, everything is always a bumper approach, I just have, I, I have a son who is, you know, uh, just entering law, like his undergraduate and then will continue into law school. But his thing is, can you imagine what the political landscape will look like in 20 years when everybody has digital information that can be pulled at any point in time? You can never make a comment out of turn, you can never make a note that didn't fit because it couldn't be taken.
Right, yeah.
Right, but, but going back as far as being young, that's what his point is, that's the lens he'd be looking at. So that's, that's all, we're a little hyper sensitive in our household, like to keep my thoughts in private journals.
Oh, and then I just wanted to throw that, you can also see, um, afterwards, when there is like a, a meeting and a meeting has posted and you have the, because we'll start, Grannicus also records our live feeds at our meetings.
Yeah.
You can go back afterwards and do a meeting.
That's nice.
And we have them in there with timestamps.
That's really nice.
Alrighty, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Start with a roll call, McKee here, Landerman.
Here.
Pedrick.
Present.
Uh, Berenkamp.
Here.
Nichols.
Also present.
Perfect. Thank you, Stan, join me in the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Presentation today, uh, from the Home Creek watershed.
Um, not before, but with Grannicus now reverting our meetings and saying that it's going to work. And their part of training is while they're doing the meeting and it's recording, they can hear timestamps when certain things are being discussed in the meeting. So whether recording is happening, it ties to that, so then later when you're recording, it's worth going back to all these journeys and, uh.
So they've done that with this.
Yeah, this is what, so this is what I'm doing with council now.
Unfinished business, uh, D A, which is a feedback for draft agreements, uh, 2025, 545, regulating peddler, peddlers, solicitors and transient merchants.
So you guys will really, I think, appreciate that. I'll make it because the doors were getting soon and I was trying to go.
Uh, so it's going to be, it's going to take me a minute because, uh, we don't have it dropped into the folder, uh, so.
I'm doing minutes or whatever.
Hot live Grannicus, so.
Yes.
Just.
Yeah.
No, 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 it's, this is good, we're.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we're adjusting our process.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
If you're viewing it on the city website.
All the other things like the presentations aren't loaded into Grannicus, and so this is a helpful download.
Let me show you.
And then really quick while you're pulling it up, it looks like it just beats three years worth, um, um, is, is that, is that going to be standard?
Three years worth of recording?
Three years worth of recording, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
But we would, yeah.
I don't think it wrapped very hard.
Yeah, um, because we only want to keep them back as far as what we have to.
And that, yeah.
Just recently, yeah. But if you look at, like, here's council right now, eventually the page for planning commission, when you get to your meeting's agendas and packets, are going to start looking like this down here, and you're going to see your upcoming meetings and your other packets.
So it is page 673 in your packet, I'm trying to make this present for.
Um, so we're working on that with communications.
Thanks for your patience.
And when those meetings start dropping in, if you go back to a past, you can see here now the agendas, the videos, the, the minutes start dropping in.
Well, maybe we could start, does council have any areas in it?
And this is what you get on the video online.
I will go ahead. Call meeting to order, uh, we'll start with a roll call, McKee here, Landerman.
Here.
Pedrick.
President.
Berenkamp.
Here.
Counselor. A lot of people just saying. You're good there. Uh, like, Stan, join me in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
We're using Grannicus for the first time, so how it dumps into there, I appreciate that.
This is one of the.
That was unintended, uh, as we're learning how to leverage the system.
It can be old enough that would like that.
Yeah, but eventually you can go back and wrap those.
This is screwed up.
At that same.
Call meeting to order, uh, we'll start with a roll call, McKee here, Landerman.
Here.
Pedrick.
President.
Berenkamp.
Here.
You're good there, uh, like, Stan, join me in the pledge allegiance.
While we're waiting. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Sorry, the current signage that suggests that reads peddler, solicitor, or inhibitor. We don't list out door-to-door advocates, I think was one of the other categories.
Uh, we saw we had item six J.
Is it possible that we can just have someone with a sign that says no solicitors, is that adequate? Will that influence the resolution number, or does it need to include multiple different categories? Anything, counsel? I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve it here.
Second.
Second. I think that was Berenkamp.
Whatever you want to do.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alrighty, uh, no presentations today, on to open forum, and Jay will walk us through for items that are not on tonight's agenda.
Yeah, so anybody who's here, uh, if they have something they'd like to speak on that's not on the agenda, please step up to the microphone. Uh, I have one card, uh, please address it to the council, the council, uh, will not engage at the time, they will listen and consider for future action. And, uh, you have five minutes. If you have any other questions, I have one card, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Jay.
Right, but basically Grannicus is the, the iLegislate, you know, that's, the iLegislate piece is the, is, is the Grannicus for you guys.
And then Zoom will still be how the public.
Hello, my name is Jake Camp.
They will provide.
We get your address, name and address, sorry about that.
Okay, my name's Jake Camp.
So.
Address is 9998 Pine Lane, at Concord, Minnesota.
It'll be, it'll be from the main page that they will see it, or eventually, um.
Name of person, Jake Camp, and background, residence, and the better way.
Planning commission meetings and about.
Project passed a policy in 2025 requiring builders to complete ESSR work within six days of closing, causing major issues with homeowners that closed their homes in 2024.
So, um.
The result is ESSR work with Polte Homes built, homes built in 2024 are not being completed in the time we have.
When they get on here.
Corcoran's new 60-day policy is allowing Polte to delay ESSR work in homes built in 2024. Currently, there are 13 homes just that follow into this pre-2025 policy. There's no incentive for Polte to continue ESSR work in homes that closed in 2024. We get emails, updates from Polte from time to time, and push you back the timeline for ESSR to be completed. Today, we receive the email, push you back again, ESSR work some 60 days due to rain amounts. By homes that closed recently have ESSR work done in the rain.
It doesn't have a call in.
Polte's telecompany sent letters to homeowners asking to extend ESSR.
Sitting there, uh, pointing, that you have a meeting and she needed to get in.
Frustrating to see homes that closed last week and the yards completed, and homes that closed over a year ago still have the final grade sprinklers and sod.
Right, because they'll be watching.
And I just want to show you, this is kind of one of the better ones.
Okay, so like, okay.
If you drive six of homes, you have to look like that.
Partake in the meeting to, like, God, I see, yeah, we still have to use the Zoom.
Makes sense.
I'm fixing up work, delaying chores, completing hot, like, packs, that is, and do it now, final grade. Can you see your corporate home is, the newest sentence, hold large corporations like Polte to their obligations.
I don't like.
Just as I would help it.
Because there's no USB.
Relaxing policy for new neighbors, allow Polte to complete the final grade.
Since there's no USB.
And so. Oh, the, the, the.
Oh, I glued to my side.
Pause on that policy, you're going to get a lot of, a home junk bill.
They should.
Also, it'd be nice to enforce the city, I ordered some more weed yards, I mean, some of the weeds are three or four feet tall, some of the homes up there. Uh, for most closed in 2024, a lot of residents have built their porches and dens regardless of.
If the mouse is wireless, usually it has the USB option, but also.
Effective is temporary issuing building permits for Polte in the city of Corcoran.
Typically, typically.
2024. Google's saying yes, so. What can Corcoran do for us?
Thank.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Sir, can I, can I ask you, what, what are you asking for? You're asking for, uh, the last one was to cease issuing permits to Polte until they're caught up.
We're asking for hope anything we can do, uh, some suggests we have, like, maybe, the probably most logical one is to delay their 60-day policy for closing ESSR houses that also just recently built. Maybe relax after Polte until you get caught up on how they built last year. I know right now they're building some, basically, they're telling me that homes that closed last year, you've got to have ESSR done within 60 days. So basically, homeless, clean last week, started getting the final name, started getting the signs, got the sprinklers. My next door house was empty last year, sitting there.
Yep, I hear you.
So we're asking for some help either by postponing the policy, so they can get caught up 2024, or, um, worst case, you know, maybe, no, they get caught up, they're building houses so fast.
Good question.
It's definitely a.
That's a deep question.
Okay, alright, no worries.
There's a city.
Top of the email?
They just don't have.
We'll ask them and then we'll, uh, email that out.
Well, also, I would imagine that.
There is, uh, no one coming in there looking at the yards, and there's no one calling the, we're rather by ourselves.
The grounds.
It's a platform.
Right, yeah, so you're.
Yeah, probably don't.
No, because you want to say your, just say something, say you get your packet and something happens with this, you would just, uh, issue a replacement and you'd be able to log in on that and then.
Because you would always have access.
Say it gets.
Yeah.
And before the meeting, it's not like you've lost your access to the packet.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think honestly, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I can get your email address and, and, uh, council's awareness, we're, we're aware of the problem, part of the reason the policy came into, uh, in, into the scene.
That's my dish. That's what I was going to think it, you know?
But for this term, you wouldn't have to.
Unfortunately, this is a.
It would have forced your outlook.
So we'll look at what we can do to help, uh, but there's also some market realities, is that there's a limited amount of sod. And, and so they, they can't do that.
Do we need to go back and.
Work with them, talk with them, and with the materials that they have.
Do we need to be in like. Why don't usually gather at the end?
So much happening, uh, sod is available for a lot of reasons, I can't.
Okay, well.
But we'll continue to talk, uh, and I'll look back for you.
We appreciate you, you can move forward as a member.
Yeah, if anybody has any questions, thank you, Deb, um, we appreciate you being here and the email, um, and, uh, all of your help. Does anybody have any, uh, questions?
Are supposed to be completed in 50 days.
If not, then, uh, I will.
But the 2024 homes.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.